I would like a motion to reconvene to public session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Let it kind of roll call, please.
Ms. Verstah? Ms. Berkowitz? Ms. Bull?
Here.
Ms. Simarusti?
Here.
Ms. Gowen?
Here.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Here.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Here.
Ms. Sherber?
Here.
Linda, are there any other communications?
There was only one email received a few days ago which everyone would have read by now about the board's business administrator's.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, and also, I do have a few announcements, I'm sorry. Wanted to announce that tomorrow, August 25th, Tuesday, from 3:00 PM till 9:00 PM, there will be a bone and marrow blood drive in memory of Anthony Raspa at the Senior Center in Highland Park. If anyone is interested in making an appointment, they can call (201) 251-3703, but walk-ins are also welcome. And I also wanted to remind the board members of the upcoming New Jersey School Boards Association annual workshop, which will be held from October 27th through 29th at the Atlantic City Convention Center. If anyone is interested in attending, please contact my office. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the regular and special session minutes from July 20th and August 5th?
So moved. Second?
Any comments?
I had a concern about the executive session minutes not having enough detail. And I know that yours should be.
From which date?
Both dates. Doesn't really seem to be enough detail there to really capture what happened at any of the meetings.
Is there a legal requirement that we have a certain amount of detail? I actually don't know.
I think it needs to be just as detailed as any of the regular meetings, but then they're held in confidence until there's no longer a question about whether or not they.
Yeah, one of the reasons that they are not as detailed as would require redaction is therefore they are immediately operable. They can be accessed via Oprah at request. So it prevents having to go back and have the attorney provide us with redaction information. If the whole board would like more detailed information on there, all they have to do is let me know of their wishes. This is the way we've been doing it.
I'd love to talk about it. I mean, I'm fine with the minutes for these minutes we're approving, but I think it'd be a good thing to talk about it, to start practices, how other districts do it, et cetera, et cetera, in the future.
I'd have to Oprah their executive session minutes.
Good point, good point.
Okay.
My mic is funny.
Thank you. Any other comments? Linda, a roll call, please.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Can we have Superintendent report, Mr. Soto, please?
Yes, very quickly. All of our teachers have been working extremely diligently in writing units of studies in all of the curriculum areas. And these are units of studies that are very creative, concise, rigorous, and also differentiated. Out of 72 that we started working on, approximately 62 have been submitted. I would imagine that this week, the rest of the units of studies will be in place. So we're very proud of that. And written by the teachers, 40 for kids. In addition to that, all of the principals and the leadership of this district, in conjunction with the teachers, were gearing up for a fantastic school year. All of the schedules are in place. We have a lot of professional development prepared for the entire school year. And so we're really looking forward to greeting our staff and our students. Thank you.
Cool. Is that it? Perfect. Are there any questions for Mr. Soto? Michelle, can we have the curriculum instruction report, please?
Yes. We have a change on curriculum item number 10. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So curriculum item number 10, that would be the approval of Handle With Care training. And there should be another name added there, and that would be Jewel Soroka. She'll be added to the Handle With Care training. And I think that was the only change. There was a list of, sorry for the papers falling around. There was a list of curriculum that was being worked on, as Mr. Soto just said. So I'll just read through this really quickly. Social Studies grades kindergarten through 12, general music grades four through 12, choral music, virtual business, technology grades K to 8, which is something new to the district. Units of study grades K to 8. Health and physical education grades six to 12, Spanish grades one to eight, French grades six to eight, AP music theory, AP language and composition, art grades K to 12, instrumental music, accounting grades nine to 12, business applications, business and personal law. And I think that was it, except that there was one project in particular that was the Seedfolk Global Project. And this was a project that Darabat Vinick from the middle school is overseeing, and she's bringing in collaborative efforts from Rutgers University to work with the middle school students on this. And that was it.
Thank you, Michelle. Any questions? Catherine, can we have the finance and facilities report, please?
Yes, the finance committee did meet tonight. I'm going to go through a number of items on the agenda briefly just to explain. Linda does this great write-up every meeting for the finance and facilities committee so that we can get an idea of what's been going on. So I'm going to read some of that. Item number 13, we're required, this is required because the former space, we talked about this, a weight room has now been transformed into an instructional space, part robotics room, part ESL classroom. Item 14, every year the district applies for extraordinary aid in the spring. If you need more detail, Linda can go on about that. Item 15 and 16, every year the district receives additional transportation aid to cover non-public transportation needs. And we're able to put that into the current year budget. Item 17 and 18, we talked about the step repairs needed at several locations at the high school. That's what this is about. Item 19 and 20, these are for units providing heating and air conditioning in the rooms adjacent to a room that will be the newest, not new assistant principals, but the middle school, high school assistant principals' new office. Item 21 and 22, this is for a service to remove chemicals that have been used in the science classrooms that can no longer be used and have to be disposed of according to EPA regulations. We need a specific company to come in and do that for us. We can't just put it into hazardous waste. Item 23 and 24 is a standard annual maintenance and service contract for the elevator at Bartle, but it ended up, you know, we're coming up against the start of school, a lot of this stuff is just really end of the summer things, but we had to have a service contract in place before the elevator could be repaired. Item 25 and 26 is the tree behind the high school cafeteria which died, has to go down before it falls on someone. Item 27, 28, we talked about the windows in the high school. They have found a solution to that, putting new brackets in to keep them from falling down, the top from falling down. Item 29 refers to a mold issue that is in the high school and is an emergent need. It has to be taken care of immediately before the students and staff come back into the building. And, let's see. Item 31 and 30 are about air conditioners that are old and in need of replacement. Item 32 is on the addendum, and that is about the Bartle School elevator that has got to be repaired. One other thing I wanted to mention is the two Sustainable Jersey grants that were applied for. And we actually, the school received them. The board approved us being part of the Sustainable Jersey program, and the students came and introduced that back in the spring. And they, so the middle school and the high school got $4,000 each. In the middle school, it's for one of the water fountains that is also a bottle refiller station. And in the high school, it's, so it's a new water fountain. In the high school, they're replacing two existing fountains with these things. And also, they're, it included purchase of refillable bottles to either be, well, to somehow be distributed among the, available to some students and staff. This is one of those great, just a great project that, this is Tracy Maiden, who's a teacher in the district, who's so committed to this kind of thing and took on Sustainable Jersey, as she's taken on so many other things. Irene Marx is a parent volunteer. They work as a team, and they have for several years, and now, I think. And then two students who are in the environmental club in the high school, who got these grants together, written, submitted, you know, got it through the administration. And I can't, I mean, this is great. This is just so, so great. I love when these things work, and we all do. It's not something that we can afford to put in place, but it's a great lesson from start to finish, and it does a great service for the district, because the kids, you know, think about refilling a bottle instead of buying a bottle.
Thank you. Is there any questions?
No, sorry.
Oh, do you have a question?
I thought I missed something important on the curriculum report. I just wanted to, you know, say on camera and out loud, number eight in the area of curriculum, the approval of male empowerment conference. It's a free event that's scheduled for August 27th, which is three days from now, from 5:00 PM to 7:30 PM in the high school cafeteria. And it's a program that is put together for male students, and their fathers are male role models. And the purpose is to provide students with community resources and to strengthen their support network. Topics include identity formation, societal pressures, expectations, and other topics related to positive well-being. And I just thought that was important to highlight. So I wanted to say that out loud and on camera, and that was it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Just very quickly, we're buying a district-wide server on page four of the earlier bill list. I feel like we're buying servers all the time. Is this a new server that we need? Do we know anything about it?
The bill is for items that were already approved.
Oh, okay.
So this is just the payment of the bill for that item that you already approved months ago.
Got it, thank you. And this Naviance amount, the 4,500, et cetera, is that the main amount that we approved? This is not some?
That was in the budget.
Yes, I remember that, right.
The budgeted item for the high school guidance department.
And is that, right, and is that the entire amount?
I believe that's the annual amount.
Oh, good, okay, all right. I thought the number was a little bit higher, but maybe that's for training or something. There's an additional, anyway, glad to see it wasn't so high.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Linda.
Personnel.
Personnel committee met tonight, and we discussed a number of new hires in the schools of both faculty and paraprofessionals. And notably, a new principal for the middle school. So that's item 17 on your agenda. I would like to read in a change on item 12, which is sort of deleting the names Cheryl Glaw, Christine Sikora, and Lucy Toddros, because those teachers are no longer teaching sixth periods. And so that is.
Thank you. Is there any comments? I do have one comment, just on the six periods. I think we're doing a better job with managing them. I do think that there is some debate on how we actually pay for these six periods. Right now, we have, our teachers are supposed to be teaching 280 minutes per day. Right now, we have teachers now teaching below 210 minutes, and also teachers who are teaching four classes a day and also receiving a sixth period. I think there is some debate in if, how we, if we are paying, if the way we are paying our teachers for the sixth period is in line with the contract. And I am looking to have that reviewed as it has been in the past, and trying to come to a conclusion with that.
I just need a point of clarification. I know that in the past, we released two of our paraprofessionals, and we certainly promised those paraprofessionals that upon a position being available, those were the two that were going to be returning to the district. I know there's one in particular, Scott Beltran, I don't see his name here. Is he a part of an addendum?
His name was on the addendum.
Yes, thank you, okay. Just want to make sure. Thank you.
Yeah, that's item 22 on the addendum.
Yep. Is there any other comments?
I just wanted to go back to that 280 minutes. Is that teachers across the board, all levels? Or I would think that it would be? I was going to say, okay. Because I would think that there's.
Yeah, middle school, high school. But that's the only place that we play the six periods as well.
Is that 280 minutes of actual teaching time? Or is it preparation time? Is it, it's actual in-class and front?
Student-teacher contact time is what it's clarified. Their full school day is obviously throughout the day with a 45-minute lunch and a prep, but the actual student-teacher contact time via our contract is 280 minutes. And that's not being done. Okay.
How is that, I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask, how is that being measured and managed? Is that on the principal's desk? Is that something that the principal is responsible for?
So there's multiple facets to it, one being the schedule that we have in place right now. 280 minutes does not, the contract is written and was never changed from our previous schedule because the time is negotiated. Right now, an average, an average teacher teaches about 240 minutes in the high school, middle school. I believe that's when we, but we also have some teachers who, just by the result of the schedule, have maybe, on some days, have classes one, two, three, have three classes in the morning, and then have nothing for the rest of the day. So there's concern in that.
Does the contract also require, did you want to, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I don't know that I got a complete answer. I mean, the principal is responsible for that? Measuring and managing that?
Yes, yes. Principal's schedules.
Okay.
There's limits through the contract to what they can and cannot do, but yeah.
I guess so my next question would be, how did that happen? How did that fall through the cracks?
It's not a fall through the cracks thing. It's the way that it's implemented with the rotating schedule that we have.
Okay.
And sometimes, as a result of.
Sorry, and the ambiguity of the actual contract language.
And sometimes not having sufficient personnel.
Exactly.
You know, that will impact the number of six periods.
Right. So, and I will say that the principal has done an excellent, excellent job with reducing them. I believe last year, they were costing us $330,000. This year, the number is, it's like, it's almost halved, which is an amazing feat by both Israel and the principal of the high school.
Okay. That answers my question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But is this going to be an item that you bring up in new business, as something that we look into for cost savings for the following year?
So, I mean, I think it's a close session conversation because the attorney would be involved for that, from where we are now.
For my clarification?
Yep.
I mean, why would we ever pay someone for a sixth period if they're working less than, what, 210 hours? Is it because the contract also has a provision mandating six-period payments? Is that?
Yes, it does.
I see.
There is parts of the contract that says if a teacher teaches beyond five classes.
I see.
But that, the definition of class is not defined.
I see, just wondering what the.
The amount of students is not defined as well. So that's why it would be a close session conversation with an attorney to see what the next appropriate.
Yeah, I was just wondering where the ambiguity was. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Thank you. Linda?
Policies and regulations?
Yeah, sorry, policy.
Policy committee did not meet tonight. I have no report.
Thank you. Public comment? Is there any public comment?
Hi, I'm Darabat Vinick at 348 Becker Street, Highland Park. And I actually wasn't even thinking of coming up for a public comment. I just was here to answer any questions initially about the collaboration that I'm doing with Rutgers, and I just wanted to say thank you for supporting that. I was actually introduced to Cheryl McLean, who's a professor at Rutgers, through Mary Curran. She kind of put us together, and I'm really excited to be working collaboratively with Rutgers on this literary project, where their students are, her students are going to be reading two texts that my students are reading, and we're looking to do a dialogue online. At the same time, she was also open to getting her students to tutor our students and to write that into her syllabus. So I look forward to seeing that play itself out with the new principal, whom I'm also very excited about, and whomever else is part of that project. I also wanted to respond to the grants that I'm also very excited about, the sustainability grants. I wrote that for the middle school with Mr. Carter. And there's one other exciting aspect to the middle school grant. We actually asked for the water to be filtered, which I'm excited about for that one. And we also put in a wellness proposition for teachers where there would be yoga instruction, and that could be open to middle and high school teachers, depending on how many people actually come in. But Mr. Carter especially came up with the idea of this wellness aspect, and we came up with the yoga class, because in the past, that was very exciting to a lot of middle school teachers. And essentially, creating more of a platform and almost a club of some sort to create wellness for teachers is something that we built into that grant as well. So, thank you so much.
I wanted to quickly say thank you for that. You know, we don't talk enough about the teachers' wellness and the environment that the teachers work in. I know that not too long ago, the teachers were working in a chaotic environment. It probably did a job on everyone's nerves. So I think that's a really important thing for us to think about. So thank you for adding that in. And thank you to Mr. Carter.
Hello, everybody. Shreez Richardson, 227 Benner Street. I just wanted to provide you all with a save the date. Highland Park Parents of Students of Color is working with Elizabeth Azamoah with the Teen Center to put together a back-to-school barbecue, a community barbecue. The working date at the moment, pending approval, will be Friday, September 25th, from 4:00 to 7:00. We're trying to get it in under the wire before sundown. And Elizabeth will be working very hard on bringing together all of the details with catering and things with the grant that she received to put together the program. So that's wonderful news. The other thing I wanted to let you know is I will be stepping down as Highland Park Parents of Students of Color lead person in September. When we reconvene, we will announce the new leadership team for that organization. So thanks so much.
What was that date again?
September the 25th.
Is that Yom Kippur? Is that Yom Kippur? No.
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 We looked at the calendar.
Yeah, you should be fine. Yeah.
Yeah, we checked the calendar, make sure. So it should be okay.
I think the week before it should be. 13, 14.
Yeah. Is there any other public comment?
Kim Crane, president of HPEA. Darra just informed me that there were a few, hang on, I'm going to make a big noise. There we go. That there were a few questions about the sixth period from a contractual standpoint, that there was a discussion. I just came up to see if there were any questions that you had that we may be able to answer for you immediately, or if you prefer to have the discussion at a different time.
Thank you.
Okay, just letting you know, we're here because this has been an ongoing issue, and we're absolutely here to answer any questions that you may have about the contract.
Thank you.
I guess if I could just ask a really quick question? So on the middle school, high school level only, when the wording comes up, how would the HPEA define student-teacher instructional time?
Well, it's actually not defined by minutes. It's in the contract, it's defined by classes. And the reason that that is, is that when you take on an extra class, you're also taking on an extra roster of students and extra responsibilities. And it was never clearly defined, but the precedent sets it to be a class, not minutes. When we went to the rotating schedule, it actually reduced the time that teachers were spending, but that wasn't, you know, it was something that the board has control over to set the schedule. And they worked really hard to go to the rotating schedule. There was, I think, a year-long of planning. But, you know, our argument is that it wasn't the teachers who, in fact, I believe they fought against it. It wasn't the teachers who decided to go to the rotating schedule and therefore reduce their FaceTime with students. That was an administrative decision. We're not opposed to increasing time with students. We're opposed to increasing a roster, because then it increases the amount of students, and it's not best practice. And in fact, the sixth period was put in the contract as payment, as a deterrent, because it's not a best practice to have the sixth period as, you know, a teacher's sixth class, because it's so much work. So I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you. Is there any other further comments? Can we have the curriculum motions, please?
Sorry. Have to go back. Okay. I would like to move curriculum and instruction numbers one through 10 with the addition of the name Jewel Soroka, number 10.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments?
The first field trip, I don't have the field trip list in front of me. I was just wondering how many students that was for, what, and like, what the cost per student was?
I think that was all grant.
Yeah, it's a teen center field trip.
That's all grant money.
It's all grant money?
Yeah. Although I will say, when I looked at that, it did remind me that I would, we need so much more information, I think, when we're being asked to approve field trips, what grades, like, you know, just that kind of like, I mean, it's kind of there, but it's not, you know, necessarily specifically spelled out. Like, it would just be really great to get more information to know exactly what it is we're approving and for who, and.
I would agree with that.
Linda, a roll call?
Ms. Bull?
Yeah, it's a team center field trip.
That's all grant money.
It's all grant money?
Yeah. Although I will say, when I looked at that, it did remind me that I would, we need so much more information, I think, when we're being asked to approve field trips, what grades, like, you know, just that kind of like, I mean, it's kind of there, but it's not, you know, necessarily specifically spelled out. Like, it would just be really great to get more information to know exactly what it is we're approving and for who, and.
I would agree with that.
Linda, a roll call?
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Catherine, please?
I move items one through 31 on the agenda and 32 on the addendum.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any conversation? Linda, a roll call, please.
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Anne?
I move items one through 17 on the regular agenda with the, with the deletions of, on number 17 of Gloss, Skora, and Tadros, and also items 18 through 22 on the addendum.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any conversation? Linda, roll call, please.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Uh, yes, but I'm going to abstain on 14.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes, but no on 14.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
I will vote yes. On all items but 14, I will vote no.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes, on all items except 14. On 14, I'll vote no.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
We do not have five votes for item 14.
I find that to be very disappointing. I think tonight, I think what we just saw was an act that I've never seen, I've never seen while I've been on the board. A board has never said no to a principal in what their recommendation is. I would hope that the union would agree with me that that would be something that, that should not happen from this table. We need to trust the people. We need to trust the people that we hire to make the right decisions, to hire the right people. Tonight, this school year, our students are going to have to start without a dean, because four board members decided that they know better than the principal on who should be in charge of, who should be in the school district and who should be hired. I don't, I would never do that to a teacher. I would never do that to anybody. I would trust the people that we hire to make these decisions.
Adam, first, I would, I would appreciate you not putting words in our mouths.
I mean.
That we are saying that our vote means that we know better, because I would certainly not say that, and I wouldn't expect that my other three fellow board members would say that. What I would say that I personally, and I will only speak for myself, want my vote to signify is that often we'd need more time to review these decisions. And if we had been given more time, for instance, if we had gotten this information two weeks ago, before this agenda, then all of this information could have been worked out. We could have asked the questions we wanted to ask. We could have been given the assurances that we felt we needed to make informed decisions. Multiple times since I've sat in this seat at this table, I've had gut feelings about whether they be hire or programmatic decisions, and so far, I'm betting a thousand. So, if I have a gut feeling like this about something, I can't sit here in good conscience at this point and vote yes. So, no, this is not because I don't trust our principal's judgment.
That's the message we're sending. That's, that is the message that he will be in, he will be in his office tomorrow and think that a board member, that the board is not supportive of, or second guesses my decisions.
I am happy to.
That's not our role. That's not our role.
Let's be clear.
We can speak with him in person, if you would like to come with, you know.
And maybe part of what needs to change about the process is board members need to be more included when hiring of building administration is, and that has, you're looking at me, Anne, as if I have four heads, but I understand that that has been practiced in the past, and that has been practiced in other districts, where maybe even the, wow, that was quite a look.
You want to manage the school.
Where even the entire.
That's what you want to do.
No.
Yes, you do. You want your personality and your opinions to be in charge of what happens in this school. You don't want it to be, you don't want the person sitting in this chair, you don't want the person sitting in any of the principal's office. You want it to be you guys, and what you guys want to see is the future of this.
That's why we almost always vote yes on things, Adam, despite having very little information about anything. I mean, it's very rare, believe it or not that we.
Why is this time different?
Well, I talked about, we talked about that in executive session. I don't know if it would be appropriate to get into it here. I have substantive objections.
Okay. And your qualifications of those objections are?
One of my qualifications. I'm a board member. If our vote has any legal meaning, I can give my explanation, but I think that would be inappropriate. So it's a little bit unfair to criticize us for just, you know, when we can't comment and really explain. Darcy says that she wants more information. I agree with that. I also feel that for the reasons stated previously in executive session, this is not the right candidate. And I, you know what? Sometimes a board member is going to disagree, and as far as I understand it, the courts have said that as long as it's not arbitrary and capricious, that's fine. Now, you mentioned that you didn't know if we even needed to vote on candidates, that perhaps this is merely a custom that we do here? You know, having votes from the board on candidates? I would like to find out that information. I had thought that this was a legal requirement, that the board approves or disapproves hires. Now to find out that, you know, maybe that's not even true, I, I feel like my whole world has been thrown asunder. So, you know, perhaps the board vote has no meaning, in which case Mr. Benjamin can go ahead and do what he wants.
And Adam, I, I want to state again, for the record, your characterization of why we're doing what we're doing is wildly inappropriate. For you to put words in our mouths, for you to ascribe motives to us, I've never looked at any other board member at this table and done so. And it's wildly inappropriate for you to do so. I will tell you exactly why I'm voting the way I'm voting, and I would tell the same thing to Mr. Soto, Mr. Benjamin, whoever cares to listen, and whoever is watching at home tonight. Please refrain from ascribing motives to me and putting words in my mouth.
Well, I just think that you fail to see that what you decide and what the votes that you make have ramifications beyond what you may say, what you may say or may not say.
I understand the thing.
That's why we're voting, that's why we're voting the way we are, because they have ramifications.
You're right. You're making a political statement, I know.
It's possible that the only ramification of this will be a two-week delay, which means that the dean and position will be implemented in two weeks after this.
I mean, I wouldn't.
That's entirely possible, Adam.
It is, but I wouldn't come to a district that the board, that if, if somebody just rejected me, and I, I mean.
We're not rejecting someone, Adam.
You are rejecting somebody.
No, I'm not.
This person is going to be, this person has been told, this person has been told that they have, that they have been offered a job, and that they are.
Pending board approval.
Pending board approval, right.
That's how job offers are made.
They are going to be called tomorrow and say that the board did not approve.
That's right.
Before you.
Yes, we understand that.
Yep.
Yes, I mean, we're educated about that. Now, if in fact.
I think this is a slippery slope that is very dangerous to go on, and I would, I would not, I would not recommend going down it, is my opinion.
Okay, I think we understand you.
Would you rather just not be there at all and just go along with everything that the superintendent recommends?
No, if he, if I disagree with him, I'm going to fire him.
Oh, that's our only choice?
We fire him over this one hire?
This explains a lot.
I really don't, I respect Mr. Soto a great deal, and I think he's done an enormous amount of good for this district. I would never want to fire him because of my disagreement with the Bartle halftime dean situation. I think Mr. Soto, I mean, that's insane.
May I?
Respectfully.
May I interject?
Yeah, thank you.
I place a lot of confidence on the ability and good judgment of all of our school leaders. I had an extensive conversation with the principal. I understand that this particular candidate went through a very rigorous interview process. There was an entire committee that were in agreement to hire this particular person. This person was recently hired, so you couldn't have been, you know, you couldn't have received this information two weeks in advance, although that would be a, a, a good suggestion. It's rather unfortunate. I will have another conversation with, with the principal, and I stand by, by the principal's good judgment, and I'm going to continue to support the leadership and the teachers and staff at Bartle.
I very much, I very much echo that sentiment, and I just want to reiterate one more thing, that the principal has met him, a committee of our peers and our community members have met him, the superintendent has met him, four people who have never met him before have decided, just by reading a piece of paper, that he's not the right choice.
I think, Adam.
That's unbelievable. That is unbelievable.
And Adam, again, you're putting words into my mouth. Mr. Soto, I hope that when you speak with Mr. Benjamin, you'll express to him what our concerns actually are, and perhaps Mr. Benjamin can give us information back that will assuage those concerns, and then hopefully the candidate, if we are all in agreement is the right candidate, then it can move forward in two weeks.
Absolutely.
This is not a rejection of an individual. This is nothing of the sort, and that kind of bombastic language is just, I don't understand it.
All right, I will have a conversation with Mr. Benjamin. I think it's very important for us to recognize that the Bartle School actually, they truly need desperately a school dean.
Couldn't agree more.
Absolutely.
And certainly, we're going to do, we're going to continue moving forward and doing every effort necessary to ensure that they receive a dean and an enrichment teacher.
I think, if I can say, I also don't appreciate you speaking for me. I would not like to see that happen again. I would like to be given the right that I have to speak for myself.
You have all the right to speak for yourself. I will characterize your statements the way I see them, and you can characterize my statements.
And you are free to do so, but you need to understand that you are also presenting yourself to the community.
I am very aware of that. I've been doing this for nine years.
And, okay.
The community has voted me three times in this business, know my personality, so.
Oh, my goodness, we're not going to talk about elections and who got voted and how contested they were and all the details of this. This is.
Yeah, this is inappropriate, is not the right time to be campaigning for yourself. But either way, I really don't.
I'm not running for reelection.
I don't appreciate you saying what I intended to do with my vote.
Okay, well, I.
So, I am, I, excuse me, I am trying to explain what my no vote was to the community. So, I don't want to be mischaracterized.
Okay.
And I wouldn't have to do so if you didn't put words in my mouth. That's what I would like for you to understand. Secondly, I have full confidence in Mr. Benjamin as the principal of Bartle School. I want to be very, very clear about that. I also understand that the procedure that we have, where our executive session is minutes before we come out here to vote, gives us very little time to do what I consider to be due diligence. I cannot with confidence make decisions in that amount of time, and it's not because I am lacking anything in intelligence. It is because I am lacking information and time with which to find out the information that I require. So, this is a very good example of why I would like to propose that we meet weekly rather than biweekly and have more than a half an hour to discuss these very important things. I also agree, the dean of students is a crucial position. Crucial. I have a Bartle student myself. I take this very personally. Would I like to put a dean of students in place tonight? 100%. Can I do that with confidence? No, I cannot. Therefore, I vote no. This is not a reflection on any of the leadership in this district.
So, I don't understand how you see that. I don't understand how you see that. You're seeing three feet in front of you, and it's really, you're, when you really should be looking 10 feet in front of you. By saying, by saying, by saying no.
Because this is not the person for the job.
So, right, it's your opinion that this, that Anthony does not have the right judgment in terms of this person.
No.
Yes, it's, it's not, you can't have one versus the other. That's what it is.
I would appreciate having a conversation with Mr. Benjamin. I would appreciate having more information.
That's not your role. You don't get that role.
Okay, so we vote no.
And you do, right, you vote no, exactly.
Then the vote is, the vote either way doesn't make sense.
I don't, I don't know that that's true, that it's not a right to have a conversation with Mr. Benjamin. I believe that in other districts, if a principal is being a building administrator, I'm sorry, we're not talking about a building administrator for this one. Well, but actually, we kind of are. I mean, a dean of students is, is rising to administrative level. I feel strongly that a principal should actually come to the personnel committee and present that person, be there to answer questions for the personnel committee. I'm not even saying necessarily the full board, but present a person and say, this is the person I'm selecting, this is why. Then the personnel committee can sit there and look at the actual principal and say, here are my concerns, here are my questions. These procedures aren't in place, and I'm sorry, we've been, I've been down this road too many times where I've felt like it's not necessarily a good fit, or we shouldn't do a program a particular way, and then we've ended up with a year of a disaster that we then have to backtrack. I'm not saying this is, you know, I'm foolproof and this is what's going to happen here, but I have reservations. I needed to express those reservations. The only option I'm given to, to express those reservations in the current system we have, as it's set up now, is I abstained. That's what I have. We asked you to table it in closed session, you, you decided not to table it, so this was the option that you left us.
Okay. Thank you. Yes?
Point of clarification, I, I know that Adam mentioned that the possibility of, of the superintendent being fired, you know. I've been leading this district with decisiveness and aplomb for the past year and, and three months, so I think it's a little late for, for me to be.
You are no exception.
I couldn't execute it in time anyway, for the contract to run out, so.
Yeah. Just, just a little bit of comic relief, okay?
Thank you.
Nobody has any inkling, any inclination in that direction.
Thank you.
President's report?
There is no president's report. There is one item on the agenda for old business. We have a motion to approve the item on the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a conversation?
Do you want to read it in, so people know what it is, or?
No.
Okay, well, then I'll.
Would you like to read it in?
We put copies out on the table. Okay, great. I'll just talk a little bit about what it is. This is, back in the spring, I think, the board approved a resolution regarding language that Governor Christie had inserted into the budget, that even though our district and many other districts across the state were either being underfunded or flat-funded, that increased funding to charter schools, which that money comes directly out of district budgets and then goes out to the charters. So this is kind of a second step to that process, where we're now adopting a resolution that we will bring to the New Jersey School Boards Association Delegate Assembly, in the hopes that it'll be approved there, and then that policy then becomes the policy, the official policy of the New Jersey School Boards Association. So it's not just Highland Park advocating for this position, it is the, the entire state and the New Jersey School Boards Association and districts statewide. So, that's what we're doing.
Thank you. Linda, a roll call. Is there any other comments? Linda, a roll call?
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Is there any other old business?
I, I do want to add and get the board's feedback on this. So, now that we've adopted this, there's kind of two little steps. One is the, the resolution is heard before their resolution subcommittee, and we have the ability to go and kind of present our, our resolution at that. to go and kind of present our resolution at that. And not only for us to send a representative to do that, but for us to also, I believe it's called interested parties, we can kind of reach out to other districts that are similarly impacted and have them come to the subcommittee meeting to make the case with us. So, I would very much like to do that and with the board's approval. I'd be happy to go and represent the board on that and to do some outreach to other districts that I know are impacted, like Hoboken and Newark and Patterson, where I know board members, and I think we'll get a good reception. And, you know, it's kind of the, it's kind of the, you know, the more people we have going forward, the better our chances are. I'm so far in my conversations with the council for the New Jersey School Boards Association, it was a very warm reception. Unfortunately, Adam was incorrect. They don't actually do the adaptation of the resolution for you, so Jonathan did have to do that for us. But this will now go back to them, and they'll do research on it. And going into that, going into that resolution subcommittee meeting, New Jersey School Boards Association will have their own position on this. So, they'll, between now and then, they'll develop a position, which very well, for whatever reason, could be against us. So, we, you know, they could be saying, "No, we don't think we should do this," with us saying, "Yes, we do." And then, if I have more districts on board, it helps to, it helps to make the case, so.
Thank you. Yeah, within her role, yeah, within her role.
Yeah, absolutely, within my role. And then, I will tag one other thing onto old business, since we haven't brought this up. We have our pending appeal of the commissioner's decision on the expansion of the Hatifa International Academy Charter School, and I just wanted to report out that over the summer, I believe it was in July, Edison has officially joined our appeal. So, that will mean not only are both districts, you know, now that we have both districts signed on, and it's not just Highland Park that's bringing this appeal, it's also Edison, but Edison is also sharing in the costs, which is fantastic. So, it's dramatically reduced the costs to the district for the appeal. And now that Edison has signed on, the hopes are that we can then do further outreach to other impacted districts like South River and North Brunswick, and that Edison, which is one of the largest districts in the state, having joined on, you know, obviously sends a very positive message to those other districts. And again, it's the kind of, you know, more districts joining on, we have a louder voice and better chance at success. So, I wanted to let everyone know about that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other old business? Any new business?
Nobody else has something. I do have some new business, too. I'm very excited to get to report as the liaison to HPTV, that HPTV is now available on FiOS. So, all you FiOS subscribers who have been missing getting to watch your board meetings on cable, now's your big chance. So, unfortunately, I don't have a schedule in front of me, but our channel is 44. So, on FiOS, you can now tune into Channel 44 to watch board meetings and all of the HPTV programming. And Gary Leslie, who runs HPTV, asked me to remind everyone that they're always looking for volunteers. The more volunteers they have, the more programming they can bring. They would love to bring more school events, school plays, sporting events, all these kinds of things, but they need more bodies to film, they need more bodies to help get it up on the screen. And now, we've basically got access to the entire town, so it's pretty exciting. So, if anybody out there is interested, they can email Gary at, get your pens out, it's a kind of weird email address, hptv151515@gmail.com. Why that's the email address, I don't know, but it is, again, hptv151515@gmail.com. And help out at HPTV and bring some more of the fantastic things we have going on here at Highland Park to HPTV.
Thank you.
Darcy, does this mean that we get makeup artists and that stuff?
Absolutely.
Learn how to smile a little more in front of the TV.
We are going to have a bigger audience.
Is there any other new business?
I have two items, Adam. The first would be going back to the six periods. We talked about it during the budget negotiations, about it being a potential savings of $375,000 a year. I think that if we delay looking into it for any amount of time from now, that it's just going to be a possible potential on next year's budget.
So, go on, sorry.
I think we need to start that conversation during our next executive session meeting.
So, it's two conversations, actually. One being, the 375 that you're referring to was if the board unilaterally made a scheduling change without any conversation. That's what that 375,000 change was. I don't think this board is willing to do that. I think what, so that conversation should start with the new superintendent and reviewing the schedules and seeing what's the best schedule. The other conversation, we can have an executive session about how we want, if we want to make any further changes in terms of how we pay out the six periods.
And then, the second item was on the executive session minutes. I am concerned that there's just not enough detail in them. I mean, if they're immediately openable, then they might as well be going up on the website with all of our other meeting minutes right now. I think there needs to be more detail there, and I hate to make you do more work on them, but I really do think that they need to be more detailed. And if someone wants to open them, then we have to explore, you know, redacted information rather than having them be spotty.
All right, I'll talk to Jonathan. Right.
Understand, but looking backwards, looking at the meeting minutes from, you know, that I was in the meeting on, I just don't think it reflects what happened in the meeting. I think we're missing something there.
Let me first talk to Jonathan and then report back to you, and then we can have, we'll make the decision from there.
Thank you.
Yep.
I also had two things. There is a trend. I know it's been a long time coming. A lot of people have talked about the scientific nature of the later start time for middle school and high school students.
Yep.
And I know that this requires negotiations with the teachers' union and other things that might need to be adjusted. But I think that that's a conversation that we should start, because the science behind it is very solid. And having a high schooler this year for the first time, the start time is 7:48. 7:48 a.m. And I know that that doesn't seem like a big deal, but 7:48 a.m., knowing what I'm seeing, you know.
I'm not even up by 7:48.
Yeah, I mean, knowing what I'm seeing at home and knowing that it's going to be getting worse as he gets older, I would assume that this is normal and natural, and it is a concern of mine for a lot of different reasons, mainly, you know, physical, mental, emotional, physical health. So, these are very important things, and I think that we should discuss this also because there are several different districts in New Jersey who have implemented this start time change already. So, if we could start that conversation, I think that that would be useful.
So, I think we all would be in favor of it. I think the union would be in favor of it, too. And I actually, I don't believe the contract actually has a start time and a start, it has the length of day. Yeah, whatever, yeah, we'll talk about it later. But there are ramifications to this.
Sure.
And you understand that, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Regarding sports.
Yes. Those things have been worked out in other districts that I have read about.
Then that's what we would need to figure out, is if the sports that we do compete against, we would still be able to make.
Right.
I mean, yes, I don't disagree with it. I don't think anybody would disagree with it, so.
Yeah, it's just a project and a half, you know. It's something that would, it would be moving a mountain, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think it's worth looking into.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I just wanted to mention that there, Governor Christie actually earlier this month approved a bill to study later start time. So, this, and that just to get the bill to get, to study it, you know, took like a year. So, I mean, I mean, everybody knows that these things don't, but even at the state level, they're starting to look at this as, you know, a statewide issue.
We've discussed it here prior many, many times.
I'm sure, yeah.
And it was just, the math doesn't work.
Right.
When we've tried it, determining on how far our competitions are and how far other competition, and how far, and how many we participate in. But willing to look at it, no problems. Totally in favor of starting at 10 o'clock.
Great.
Sports before, sports in the beginning of the day, I like, and then school.
There are definitely other districts that we can explore. You know, we can talk to parents and board members in other districts. That might be a good way to start.
But we have our blue division, and that will dictate a lot of who we talk to.
Sure. I mean, I know that in my high school, there were allowances made for athletics that were not made for other clubs. That could be a compromise. I don't know.
Okay.
But the other thing that I wanted to discuss was what I brought up earlier, was the option that we could take to meet on a weekly basis, so that we could have more time to digest the information and more time to do our own research about, you know, different things that come up in executive session. So, I would like to propose that we also begin that conversation about changing board meetings rather than biweekly to weekly. And it could be that we keep the executive session in a short form before each of our board meetings, before, you know, the public session, but that we meet on a weekly basis to discuss.
Are you saying public meetings on a weekly basis?
No, not public meetings. Executive sessions on a weekly basis. So that we would have a shortened executive session as we have now and revisit things very concisely, and then to have on alternating weeks from our public session, executive sessions where we can spend time and really dig deeper into different things, and then have the week in the middle to digest what we've heard and to do a little bit more background research to, you know, reach out to the administration or the teachers, or to do our own investigation outside of the district, so.
I mean, there was actually a structure that I learned about at the last school boards workshop last October, and I brought to the table, and there wasn't support for it then, but I think moving forward, there'll probably be support for, which was more, instead of doing weekly full meetings, you'd have kind of more staggered committee meetings, and committee meetings would not be meeting. I mean, I think the bigger problem than the executive committee meetings is that we layer committee meetings, then executive, then open session.
Yeah.
I think what we need to actually be staggering is the committee meetings. So, the committee meetings are at different times. So, a lot of these issues that we see come up from time to time at the board table are ironed out in committee. And one of the things that, and I think it was actually Hillsborough, if my memory is serving me right, it was the new superintendent in Hillsborough and three board members that presented, that the committees actually took minutes of their meetings, and then those were disseminated to the other committees. So, all of the committees knew what was going on in the other committees, but you got that, again, well in advance of the board meeting, before you were going to vote on all of these things. So, there's, you kind of, you're not trying to get all of the board meeting members together, which very often is, you know, proves difficult. But it's easier to get a committee meeting together. If you've got three people, you can figure your out schedules and a time, and, you know, every two weeks it works, that's not right before the meetings. And then, you're, you know, you get that lead time, plus you're disseminating information to the rest of the board. So, you know, I still have all the contact information for those folks, and, you know, I'm happy to talk to Dr. Taylor about it as he comes on board, and, you know, if everybody thinks it's a good framework, you know, maybe it's a thing we can try to work on.
So, here's the thing. I'm going to be selfish here. I can't meet on any other night. I have class Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday night, from 6:00 to 9:00, every night.
Okay.
So, for this remainder of this board year, that's not going to, I can't, I can't do that. So, mine are Monday.
But Mondays are good.
Mondays are fine for me.
Okay.
But also, in terms of committee meetings, committee meetings are always at the discretion of the chair. A chair can call a meeting at any time that they want.
Right, but we hardly ever do.
That's, it's right. It's at the discretion of, it's at the discretion of the chair.
Right. So, being that I'm not a chair.
Right.
That would be difficult for me to adjust.
Exactly. It's something for you, I mean, I'm not, I don't have much flexibility here, so I would recommend having the conversation, being, as you said, the board calendar for next year. But I just, I don't have flexibility in terms of this year.
Okay.
For me. And I would imagine that other board members would run into some similar situations in just amount of time.
Sure, but you work that out with, you know, it's easier, I think, to work that out with three people than it is to try to work it out with the full board.
Yeah, and to be clear, I think that the committee meetings were, you know, my intended target, really. The executive session, there were a lot of personnel items that we discussed, so we did have a lengthy executive session this time, but really, the curriculum committees, the personnel committee, those things do need to be, I think, they need to be documented, they need to be shared amongst us.
I don't disagree with you.
Yeah, and I do think that we need a lot more time.
I don't disagree with you on that point, and I also, I think Linda does an amazing job of explaining to the finance committee what's on the agenda. I think this year has gotten a little awry of what we've done. I think we-
We had a lot on our plates.
Partly, we had a lot on our plates, partly, we don't have an assistant superintendent as well, as somebody who's in charge of one of the curriculum committee. And Mr. Soto has a lot on his plate as well. So, I think-
Nobody would disagree with that.
I think we would hope to rectify that for the remaining of the year, with the new superintendent coming on and not going through a search, but I can't guarantee that.
Sure. I just thought that it was something that we should think about, so I'm glad that there's some, you know, some flexibility in just starting that conversation. Sounds good.
Yeah, thank you. Is there any other new business? Is there any public comment?
So, regarding the conversation about the dean and the discussion that ensued, I think that we need to find a balance, because we're in a new era of understanding what our roles are and being comfortable with those roles. And I do believe that in the past, you know, we had a situation where the board either just passed everything that the superintendent did, and there were a lot of, you know, yeses, or we've also had boards that really, in the way past, that really did not, really ran things, which was not appropriate either. And I think that it's very important for us to find that balance and to understand what our roles are and to ask questions. I agree that questions need to be asked and that time needs to be given, and that the board needs to be comfortable with the decisions. But I also believe that part of those decisions are administrative and staff trust. So, I'm sitting here listening to the discussion and feeling like it's good. Yeah, it's better. It's a lot better than we were before, because we, if, you know, the price of an involved board is the involved board. You know, there's going to be opinions, and when you have passionate people that do these things on both sides, you're going to have strong opinions. And I do think that, you know, there is going to need to be a comfort level with the administrators that we're bringing on as well, and a trust that's built back up, and that we always need to be mindful of never being yes people, but also getting comfortable with the administrators that we trust and with their decisions and sometimes having some give and take. So, that's not going to resolve your battle with the dean right now. We need a dean. I was not involved in the interviews personally. I trust that the processes that we have seen in the past year, superintendent, you know, all of these processes, regardless of the candidates that we got in that we felt, you know, personally, the process is 100 times better, and at least we have a voice. So, we're doing well, people. We're doing well, and it's good. The argument is, you know, and it's not really an argument, it's discussion. The discussion is eons ahead of where we were before. So, thank you for asking questions, and thank you for holding the processes together, because both of those pieces are really important.
Thank you.
First, I wanted to say, in terms of Hatifa, as of a month ago, Hatifa's sixth grade class was not filled. Like, they were still sending out advertisements to the citizens of our community, asking people to join them. And usually, when you have a charter school, you usually have 100 kids on a waiting list dying to get into the school. So, the fact that they still have open slots, I don't know if they do today, but they did a month ago, says something about it, and somebody might want to look into when exactly they filled those slots, if they even have filled a full sixth grade class, because that's going to affect probably whatever decision there is to continue the Hatifa expansion. In terms of the dean versus the superintendent, I walked into the meeting hearing everybody screaming and hollering at each other. I don't even know the full details of what it is, but a month ago, we finished hiring for a superintendent, and some of the board people voted no, and some of the board people voted yes, and I said their comments of why they voted no. And I just went to a meeting with some people at tea yesterday on Sunday, and people asked, "Well, what was your opinion of the new superintendent?" And every single one of them had very positive things to say about the new superintendent. So, even though they voted no, it wasn't that they thought he was a bad candidate, it was maybe there was something about him that they disagreed with, but it was more of a vote to say what they envisioned and helped in the growth of it to make him even better. In terms, any hiring of a person, whether it's a dean or whether it's the middle school principal, which I'm kind of upset that the middle school principal is not here to introduce herself. I would have liked, I was hoping that we would have had her here to say, "Hi, community, this is what my vision is." But in terms of the dean, I would hope that by the time it got to the point where the board was voting on it, that even if people had nos and yeses, people would feel confident with their votes. And I think even the people that were voting no today didn't feel confident with even voting no. It's like they really would have preferred to say, "Give us a little bit more time to learn who this person is." And I hope that you reconsider, and don't say to this person, "We're firing you," or "We're not going to hire you," but just say, "The board would like a little bit more time to make this decision in order to make sure that you are definitely the best person for the job, and that everybody in the community, from the principal to the superintendent to everybody on the board, to the parents, all feel that this is the best person for the job." Thank you.
The one thing I do want to respond to, Melissa, the first time we'll be able to find out what the enrollment is, is October 15. That's when the entire state does their enrollment count, and lots is based on that enrollment count. So, we'll find out October 15th whether that class is filled or not.
Do you get to find out exactly when they fill their class? Because someone that filled it back in April is going to be vastly different than someone that filled it in October 14th.
Uh, no. We'll just find out how many kids are in that class.
Yeah, please, please.
Melissa, I just want to clarify a couple of matters. I don't want the fact that the new middle school principal did not show up to be a negative reflection on her. I was the one who actually advised her not to come, that I believe that on the September 8th would be more appropriate when she is the principal. So, please, I don't want this to be a negative reflection on her. I was the one who advised her that it wasn't absolutely necessary. She did call me to ask me, "Would it be appropriate for her to come tonight?" And I said, you know, "There's no need to come tonight." However, September 8th, when you are officially voted in as the principal, I think that would be the most appropriate time.
Was she voted, actually, today?
Yep.
Okay, so next time, just in the future when we have another high position, can you put in the agenda, we're voting on this person tonight, but if we vote yes, she's going to do a public comment and question and answer at the next board meeting or something along those times, so parents know this is when you're going to get to meet her. And you have any questions to answer.
Yep.